Let's go ahead and call the attention or the meeting to order. It's exactly 7:00 PM. In a couple of seconds. With this, I'd like to go ahead and start the meeting out as we normally do with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance. So if you don't mind, rise and join us in prayer. Heavenly Father, as we gather today for the Planning Commission meeting, we humbly ask for your guidance and wisdom in our deliberations. Grant us discernment to see the needs of the community clearly and the foresight to make the decisions that promote responsible development while honoring the character of our county. May our discussions be respectful, thoughtful, and focused on the greater good. Help us to listen attentively to all perspectives, weigh options with fairness, and ultimately choose what is best for the future of our community. We thank you for your presence with us and ask that you bless our work today. Amen.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Diana Edstrom. Dan McCollin. Kyle Donardo. Kyle Donardo, absent. Nicole Hunt. John Gresham. DeeDee Shot Grace. DeeDee Shot Grace, absent. Van Sands. Robert Politek. Kevin Kirkwood.
Present.
Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please take a minute. If you haven't already, turn off your cell phones. They're fun little noisemakers in the middle of a meeting. With that, Jennifer, do you have a staff report?
Yes, our evening commissioners. Two projects have been heard before the Board of County Commissioners. The Goodman Rezone project was approved by the B O C C and the Sundance 1041 and S U R project was also approved by the B O C C.
Okay. Thank you. With that, any citizen comments? And citizens' comments at this point or any comments that are not related to the matters at hand tonight? And please start name, address.
All that good stuff.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carrie Gibbleitz, 19656 Wiedemeyer Road, Chairman of Albert County Environmental Alliance. I'd like to start by thanking C D S and their staff for creating the Excel Power Pathway page on their website. That has been so informative and helpful. So, thank you. Good job. I appreciate that. So, you will be voting on Excel's application in two weeks. What you must also consider is the fact that these high voltage power lines are just the tip of the iceberg. If approved, Excel will open the floodgates to developing wind and solar projects throughout our county. The following information can be found on Excel's Colorado's Power Pathway website. The eastern plains of Colorado is one of the nation's best areas for wind and solar. New transmission lines encourage construction of wind and solar power plants. Colorado's Power Pathway will carry the approximately 5,500 megawatts of new wind, solar, and other resources Excel Energy plans to add through 2030 to meet the state's growing electricity needs. If you have a transmission line on the property, the likelihood of a wind farm developing nearby is greater. While a transmission line traversing your property does not guarantee you will be offered the opportunity to participate in a renewable energy project, it does increase the chance. Metropolitan areas of the state will have increased access to renewable generation to serve area load and meet the goals of specific retail and wholesale customers and local communities. So again, the metro area is the beneficiary. These are off of Excel's F A Qs. Question: Will the jurisdictions along the routes see an increase in land use applications for solar and wind facilities resulting from this transmission line? The answer: One purpose of Colorado's Power Pathway is for developers to have an opportunity to interconnect. We suspect that once Colorado's Power Pathway is approved by jurisdictions, there will be increased interest in developing wind and solar projects. Is Colorado's Power Pathway being routed where future wind and solar projects will be placed? Colorado's Power Pathway is routed through some of the best wind and solar resource zones in Colorado. New renewable energy generation is anticipated to be developed in these zones. The location of these new generation resources is currently unknown and could be located near the new transmission line or many miles away. We have been told by Excel engineers that these facilities can be placed anywhere within 35 miles of the transmission line. So if you have a line going down Kiowa Bennett Road, 35 miles in either direction spans the width of our county. So slathering the eastern plains with wind and solar, which former P U C Chair John Gavin suggests, is not my vision for Albert County. Is it yours? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? With that, we'll close citizens' comments. We do have a couple pieces of business that we do need to conduct. As it was pointed out to me, we have inadvertently changed the amount of time that each speaker has been allowed to speak from three minutes to five minutes as part of our bylaws. Those are limited to three minutes. So at this point, I would like to entertain a motion to extend the meeting minutes to the chairman's discretion or no more than five minutes.
So moved.
You said so moved. You need to get a little closer to the mic.
Do I need to make the motion?
Yes.
Okay. I thought you were just there. Okay.
Oh, you turned off again.
I make the motion that we amend the bylaws. There currently allotted three minutes for the public to speak on pertinent issues in front of the commission to be changed to the discretion of the chairman not to exceed five minutes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? In the matter of red lines for the rules and regulations, we did share in working session two minutes ago, the rules and regulations that we thought needed to be changed. Jennifer, can you bring those up if you don't mind real quick?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, what would you like me to bring up the...
The red lines that were sent to us?
I haven't sent any red lines to the group at this time.
Okay. So there were two red lines that did not require major shifts. The first was the Economic Development Zone and the second was...
Concept brief.
The concept brief or the lack of the concept brief. Both of those were to be stricken from or stricken from the rules and regs with the idea that the county would be rethinking how we go after economic development and the concept brief was deemed redundant. So with that thought, I would entertain a motion to approve those or a recommendation to approve those for the Board of County Commissioners.
I just have one question. Have we looked at the entire, for the two things we're talking about, have we looked at the entire zoning regulation to see where else these two things come up? Because I'm sure it's in more than just that section.
Yes, ma'am. I have done the red lines in the last few days. They have not been provided to you all yet. They're being reviewed by the county attorney. But yes, as a part of that process, we found anywhere else that they were referenced, correct?
I would feel a lot more comfortable voting on something that I have in front of me in paper or computer, especially since it will be throughout the regulations that have to be changed.
Right. The concept is that we'd be voting on the first two, which are known entities and we discussed in the working group session. And the second motion will be to carry those forward and vote at the meeting post the July 3rd meeting. So it's going to be, I believe, July 17th.
June 17th.
June 17th, sorry. Got my Junes mixed up.
So we're, at this point, we're voting on having C D S get us that information and then we will vote on it at that meeting we're talking about?
No, we're recommending that we approve the removal of the Economic Development Zones and the Concept Briefs and then we will consider the rest of the elements, one of which was provide a two-year versus a three-year management plan, which is a one-word change in the future meeting on the June 17th.
I don't like being the fly in the ointment, but, and I'm not opposed to doing this. I'm only opposed to not having the document in front of me to approve.
Understand. I appreciate that. I've asked for a motion. The motion can carry or the motion can fold.
So, Jennifer, so the... Is the action item to have that all in front of us before June 17th? All of the, all of the action items that we had come up with during the work session group?
So what's been prepared so far is the E D Z, Concept Brief, Community Meeting, and Landscape Warranty, as well as a few corrections in those corresponding articles. What is not included, that was discussed, was the addition of a tree preservation ordinance or design guidelines. So I didn't want to say yes because it doesn't include those, but it includes those others that were quicker changes to existing regulations.
Right. And so those would be presented to us to vote on on June 17th?
That's correct. Red lines in their entirety.
Including the tree preservation?
It would not include the tree preservation ordinance or design guidelines, not on the 17th. No, sir.
So what's the timeline for that one?
I do not have a timeline for that one in particular yet.
I'd like to see a timeline for that, for sure. Sooner than later, please.
Chair, so I'm thinking since she's stipulated that it is going to be on the books by June 17th, I think we're okay to wait until June 17th to be able to have the group assess all of the simple ones, knowing full well that the others are going to be, you know, a little bit more long-term, but the simple ones are the ones that we were really trying to get on the books, so to speak.
So what else is included on the agenda for the June 17th meeting?
Nothing has been noticed yet, but off the top of my head, I believe we have a... I think we have one or two other land use cases, but they are not extremely substantial compared to others that you've seen recently and forthcoming. Fairly standard land use cases, I believe there are two currently penciled in. So there would be room for regulations, absolutely, and I already have that penciled in as well.
Okay.
An S U R and a rezone, I believe.
What's the S U R? Because those can become interesting.
I believe it is, again, it hasn't been noticed, but I believe we were planning to have an S U R for the patch.
Okay.
General amusement.
Right. I'm aware.
Operation.
So I can amend my thought process here and have us review dedicated red lines and make final approval on the 17th, assuming that we have red lines in hand and it's the first item on the agenda. So I want to push that, the concept, because we've been doing this dance for a little over a month, month and a half, two months, and these are not heinous changes. So altering the amendment or the motion, how would that look?
Mr. Chair, I don't believe a motion would be necessary. I can, we can make that happen.
Okay. So because we brought it up and we've discussed it here, it is a matter of record and I would definitely strongly urge us to have us meet that commitment.
Understood.
Okay. Fair enough. With that, I would like to open the public hearing.
Could I, and I'm so sorry, could I ask just two quick questions on this? So if the E D Z is removed, how does that impact any applications that are with C D S? Will those just, will those proceed, assuming you have any?
Oh, they have them.
Well, no changes would go into effect until approved by the Board of County Commissioners and recorded.
An additional month after the vote.
Right. No, I understand that. I guess what I'm, let me rephrase it. By passing that, once the B O C C, if they pass it, what does that do to the status of any E D Zs that are in the pipeline? Does that, do they get withdrawn or do they proceed forward because they're in process? And I think this is an important point.
It's a great question. I mean, I will defer to the county attorney on that exact timing and how that would work.
Is the county attorney present tonight?
No, sir.
Then we need to make this a force of habit to get the county attorney here because when we ask a question, we would like an answer.
Absolutely. I will let him know about that request. Typically, changes defer to the standards at the time of their application, correct? However, if that district no longer exists, I don't know that that's an option. I just want to be clear though that I'm not the county attorney and so I can't speak 100% legally, but it's something that we would certainly have discussed and will be clear, we can have that answer on the 17th and certainly before it's heard, before the B O C C as well, understanding that that timing would then become very close.
Again, we need to have the county attorney present at meetings to answer these kinds of questions. So I think we are at an impasse until the meeting on the 17th. Any other questions?
Sorry, just one more. At the last B O C C meeting, there was an executive session and Jennifer, I don't know if you have...
We're not allowed to speak of what happens at the Board of County Commissioners meetings. It is not our matter at hand.
Okay.
So with that being said, we, the 17th becomes a very interesting meeting. I would like to have the county attorney present and available to answer questions. I actually kind of think that some of those need to be answered beforehand. So if this is a matter of record, the questions are a matter of record, let's get them in front of the county attorney so he can answer them prior to this. And I believe he can answer via email. So we'd like to get that sooner rather than later. You're taking notes, I see. Are we ready to proceed?
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. The matter at hand tonight is the three S U Rs, starting off with the Bijou Hills Meteorological Wow, English, not me, Meteorological Towers, Whirl Met, 0498, S U R 2024-10109. Easier for you to say. Mr. Klavanna, I believe you are leading the charge.
Pardon me, Chair, if you could do the public hearing process?
Oh, thank you. We are beginning the public hearing process. With that, Danny, please take it away.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner, and my name is Danny Klavanna and I'm a land use planner here in Albert County. I would like to present these three S U Rs concurrently with different sections and I'll kind of get into the reason why, but I think based on the approval criteria being redundant, it would make sense. So with that, the presentation here is for S U R 2024-0109, S U R 2024-0114, and S U R 2024-2490. So there's three locations and I will get into each location for these meteorological towers, also referred to as MET towers. The site size varies and the zoning for each is agriculture. Again, the request is to approve three separate S U Rs for the installation of towers used for the collection of meteorological data. And each agenda item will be for the purpose of permitting a use by special review for the installation of a MET tower for the collection of wind data. Each tower will be located on a separate parcel with separate ownership. However, each application is identical in regard to the applicant, the nature of the proposed construction, and the proposed S U R restrictions. One difference is that the Hurtneckie Tower is 81.3 meters, while the other two towers are 60 meters. Bijou Hills Wind LLC is the applicant. Matthew Pagan was their applicant representative. They also have two other applicant representatives here tonight. So the project timeline for this began in May of 2024 with a pre-application meeting. That was followed by a community meeting on July 23rd of 2024. The application was formally submitted February 18th of 2025 and here we are today, May 20th, for the Planning Commission meeting and there is a Board of County Commissioners hearing scheduled for June 11th. All noticing complied with Albert County zoning regulations, 14-day advance notice with a newspaper notification published in Ranchland News on May 1st, mailed notice sent to surrounding property owners within a quarter-mile radius on May 6th, and a public notice signed posted at the subject property May 5th. This is kind of a broad look at the county. You'll see kind of in the center to top, there's Elizabeth and Kiowa, and the three towers are down here towards the south and east of the county. I removed a little bit of the map to make it a little bit easier to see the locations, but from left to right is the Worrell Tower, 0498, followed by the Hurtneckie Tower, 0598, and then just north of Mathis in there is the Chambers Tower, 0798B. The Worrell Tower is generally located at the southwest corner of County Road 93 and County Road 90. The Hurtneckie Tower is south of County Road 90 and generally west of County Road 105 and the Chambers Tower is south of County Road 102 and east of County Road 149. The first tower I will get into here is a Worrell Tower and that is S U R 2024-0109. And again, that's tower number 0498. This is located on a 320-acre parcel that is actually divided into two quarter sections, 160 acres within Section 9 and 160 acres in Section 17. Currently, there's ranch lands with a pole barn on this property. The property owner is Kimberly Worrell and the access for this will be from County Road 90. The closest resident is over a half-mile away at Hurtneckie Residence up to the north. Here is a look at the zoning. It's an interesting parcel because as you can see, the star is located in that quarter section there, kind of next to that L-shaped property, and then the other piece of that property is actually kind of catty-corner up to the right of that. This is currently undeveloped and grasslands generally used for livestock. And adjacent to it are three properties owned by Hurtneckie Farms and Robert Hurtneckie. These include 720-acre property that's generally to the west and the south, a 160-acre property to the east, and a 560-acre property to the north. This property is located about three and a half miles north of the Albert El Paso County line and about 10 and a half miles driving from Simla via County Road 90, 117, County Road 86, and County Road 125. Immediate surrounding properties, again, all zoned ag and ranching properties. The agricultural zoning will not change with the approval of this S U R. Kind of moving to a different look, here's an aerial of the property. As you can see, actually, the Hurtneckie Residence, the closest home, it's off the screen from here, so you can't see it, but it'd be just kind of a little bit further north up at the top of your picture. Here's a look at where the tower would be located with its setbacks. It would be set back approximately 960 feet from the north property line there and then 384 feet from that eastern property line. Moving to their S U R, this is kind of a similar look. It has elevation contours, but basically shows the same with the entire property shown there. Moving to the next special use area, that is the Hurtneckie location, that is case S U R 2024-0114 and the tower number is 0598. This is a hundred and sixty acre parcel, which is currently unimproved ranch lands. This is the taller tower, so this is the eighty one point three meter tall tower, which is approximately two hundred and sixty six feet tall. There are several property owners for this, including a few Hurtneckies and two others. The access for this is County Road ninety and the closest residence is about three quarters of a mile from this tower location. Here is a zoning map, again, surrounded by agricultural zoning. The land is also undeveloped, grasslands and primarily used for livestock grazing, excuse me. There are five properties adjacent to this one, including a four hundred and two acre property to the west, one hundred and sixty acre property to the north, one thousand one hundred and twenty acre property to the south and a forty and two hundred acre property to the east of this one. Here's a look at an aerial. And the closest residence is there to the west, about over three quarters of a mile, about point eight miles there to the west of this tower location. It's located approximately three and a half miles north of the Elbert El Paso County line as well and about or five miles as a crow flies from Simla or eight and a half miles driving. Again, immediate properties are all zoned ag and the agricultural zoning of this property will not change with approval of this S U R. Moving into the setbacks for this tower, it's about four hundred and eight feet from that north property line and eight hundred ninety five feet from the eastern property line. And here's a look at the entire parcel with the proposed tower location as well as a little detail with those setbacks and the access. Moving to the next tower location, that is the Chambers Tower and that is case S U R twenty twenty four dash two four nine zero. And the tower is referred to as zero seven nine eight B. It's located on a six hundred and forty acre parcel, which is one section. It's currently unimproved ranch lands and this will be another sixty meter tower, one hundred and ninety seven feet. The property owners for this are Delvin Lee Chambers and Jolene Francis Chambers. The access would be from County Road one oh two and the closest residence is about three quarters of a mile. Here's a look at the zoning for this six hundred and forty acre parcel. It is zoned ag as all the properties around it are and it is currently undeveloped and used as grasslands for ranching, livestock grazing. There are three properties adjacent to this one, including a five thousand five hundred and sixty one acre property to the west, a six hundred and forty acre property to the north and a seven hundred and ninety five acre property to the south and east. Here's an aerial view and the star generally locates where the tower would be. It's located about three miles north of Matheson via County Road one forty nine. Immediate surrounding properties, again, all zoned ag and are ranching properties. The property's agricultural zoning would not change with the approval for this S U R. Here's a general pin for where this would be located. Two hundred and fifty feet from the north property line and about twelve hundred feet from that eastern property line. Here's the detail for that and you can see that entire section of land with the approximate location of the tower. Here are some images of what these towers are. These are meteorological towers, kind of like a tall pole in the ground that are held up with guy wires. They range from the one hundred and ninety seven foot towers to two hundred and sixty six feet. The purpose of these towers is collection of wind data that could be used to design a future wind project in Elbert County. Again, these towers are strictly for meteorological purposes. They will not broadcast any signals. Each tower will be mounted on a small platform and suspended with guy wires. They also will be painted with orange and white bands and the anchor points will be protected from cattle or other livestock pedestrians. So there's exclusionary fencing around the anchor points. There's also a small solar panel mounted on each tower for power and a data logger. So a little about these projects. For tower projects, they must be set back at least as far as the height of the tower. All these are set back more than that, quite a bit more in some cases. The single permitted use is the meteorological tower. There's no parking areas. There are exclusionary fencing around the guy wire anchor points. There is a solar aviation light. No water or wastewater is required for these. No landscaping is proposed or required and no vegetation really will be disturbed with these. And the applicants are applying some best practices from U S Fish and Wildlife Service twenty twenty two Bird Friendly Communication Tower Toolkit. And that includes some identification on these guy wires. So it decreases the likelihood of bird collisions. Note for these and one of the S U R rules we have is upon removal of the meteorological tower, the S U R entitlements shall also be removed from the property. So once the tower comes down, there can't be new towers coming up or any other changes to the property. Basically, the tower comes down and that's the end of the project. Grading and vegetation removal are not required for installation of these towers. These are the departments and agencies that were given the opportunity to review this. And one of the main comments came from U S Fish and Wildlife Service, the Colorado Ecological Services Field Office for those bird friendly recommendations. There were limited comments. Main comments included adding detail and some revisions to the S U R exhibits. There was a question with Public Works about access and temporary access is fine for these. So they won't be constructing new access out to these points. A little more about the referral. The first round was from February twentieth to March thirteenth and the applicant responded to all relevant comments. And the second referral was April eighth to April twenty first. We also had a commissioner note that there was an incorrectly labeled section for one of these projects and the applicant properly came back and revised their S U R package. So thank you for catching that and they have provided us with a new copy with the tower in the correct location, in the correct section with the narrative. So we appreciate that. Public comments, I was at this community meeting. There were two representatives from the Bijou Hills team and four residents. It was generally a positive discussion, asking about these towers, how leasing works, duration of tower lifespan, potential livestock and water wells and tower locations and what are these towers for? No public comments have been received following the community meeting phase. So now I'm going to go through the approval criteria and the approval criteria is generally the same for each tower. So the use is in harmony and compatible with the surrounding area and neighborhood. These special use for the MET towers is generally compatible with the surrounding area and neighborhood. The land use table requires that non-commercial antenna support structures over a hundred and twenty feet in height receive a special use by review. And that's kind of the closest like for like comparison in our regulation. So that's what we're going with, kind of calling this like an antenna support structure. Non-commercial antenna structures, again, are the closest likes. Additionally, it's interesting MET towers were deemed compatible with this area with approvals for other towers in twenty eighteen. B, no undue burden on infrastructure. So the use will not have an undue burden on any available infrastructure. Elbert County Public Works Department reviewed the application and had no objections. The construction of the tower will consist of a small team, three to four members generally, who are onsite for a day or two to install the tower. Towers are self-powered and require no additional electricity, water or other utilities and minimal maintenance or supervision. C, the use will not unduly increase traffic congestion or burden the existing road system. This is kind of a one trip and done type deal. So Road and Bridge Department reviewed the application and had no objections to this special use. Temporary access for the installation of the MET towers is acceptable and no permanent access upgrades are necessary. The use will not cause significant air, odor, water, noise or light pollution. The uses proposed are not believed to cause significant forms of pollution. There is a light at the top of the tower that conforms to FAA regulations. E, all sanitation requirements will be met. Again, there's no onsite wastewater treatment system here. Elbert County Health Department reviewed and had no objections. No water of any type is required for these projects. F, the use will be adequately landscaped, buffered and screened. The towers are positioned with significant distance from any improvements. The closest residential building is thousands of feet from the tower location. G, the use will not be detrimental to the health, safety or welfare of present inhabitants of Elbert County or future. The use will not be detrimental to Elbert County residents. Big Sandy Fire Protection District was a referral agency for this application, had no objections. Staff sees no concerns related to health, safety or welfare of future or present inhabitants of Elbert County for these S U Rs. And H, supplemental standards are met. So this has a few supplemental standards, which I'll get into and kind of based on the general standards for antenna support structures, even though it isn't quite that, it's again, the closest comparison. So it complies with FAA, FCC and C dot regulations. C dot only looks at stuff along state highways. None of these are along state highways. FAA and FCC were referral agencies and they will have to comply with all FAA and FCC regulations. The applicant has filed notice with the Federal Aviation Authority under the provision of forty nine U S C Section four four seven one eight and Title fourteen of the Code of Federal Regulations, Part seventy seven. The FAA provided the determination of no hazard on August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. These towers will not broadcast any AM or FM radio waves and the tower is not in an environmentally sensitive area. The tower is not near or along a state highway. Two, meets setback regulate requirements with the base of the tower no closer than the tower height. As you saw, all the towers were set back more than their height. So none were closer than one hundred and ninety seven feet or two hundred and sixty six feet. And the guy wires will be protected. The tower meets Elbert County setback requirements. Again, the base of the structures are further from property boundaries than the height of the structure and all guy wires placed on the properties will be protected from livestock, vehicles and pedestrians with exclusionary fencing. Three, enforces restrictions based on historic preservation and safety. This is for federal communications for antennas. So it doesn't really apply here and it basically restricts how you can judge an antenna tower. That doesn't really apply here, but restrictions based on safety and historic preservation have been addressed and there's no concern there. And then four, it includes the Elbert County Communications Authority as a referral. They were contacted during the referral period and did not respond. So based on the review of approval criteria found in Elbert County zoning regulations, Article three E five and the findings in the staff report, staff recommends the Planning Commission to recommend approval with conditions for the Bijou Hills MET Tower S U Rs. They're pretty general conditions here. The applicant will be required to remove the public hearing signs within fourteen days of a decision by the Board of County Commissioners. The S U R will not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met and the S U R exhibit is recorded. Recordation of all appropriate documentation is to occur within a hundred and eighty days of Board of County Commissioner approval. And for the applicable Federal Aviation Administration and Federal Communications Commission regulations shall be adhered to during the life and existence of the tower. So no like broadcasting or changes to lighting and things like that to follow those federal regulations. So that wraps up the presentation for these three towers. We do have people from the applicant team here and I have applicants online too for this if they're needed. And if you have any questions for me first, that's all right and I'd be happy to answer them.
So we'll get to your questions in a minute. The applicant team, please feel free to come up and present.
First, is they need to be admitted? Matt, are you there? There he is.
We can see you, Matt.
We can see you, Matt. Can you hear us? We can't hear you yet.
Danny, go up to people.
Hi, can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay. Well, hi, good evening. Yes, and Danny, thank you so much for that excellent presentation. Good evening, Planning Commission and guests. Thank you so much for giving us the time here to present our S U R case for our MET towers. My name is Matthew Pagan. I'm a part of the applicant team with the Bijou Hills LLC and I have some of my coworkers here as well. I think the case, as Danny outlined, is pretty standard and simple. We're looking to just put out three new meteorological towers in the area. One thing I do want to highlight that wasn't mentioned is that these towers are intended to be temporary towers. So there is a, you know, we don't have a certainty on the end date, but I can't imagine it would be more than seven years. We also do have a good relationship with the county, having previously deployed. We also do have a good relationship with the county, having previously deployed three of these similar towers in the nearby area back in 2018. Those towers, unfortunately, they're a little bit older technology, and they had some malfunctions, and so, you know, we're looking to try to supplement our, our data collection efforts here, and, and that's the nature of our request. So, again, thank you for your time. I'd like to give the floor to my coworker, Tyler Streb, so he can present himself as
Thank you, everyone. Thank you also to Danny and C D S and the commission for hearing our case today. I am Tyler Streb. I work... It is, can you hear me? Sorry, I'll just put this down. I just wanted to thank the commission for hearing our case tonight. I'm grateful to be here and look forward to working with you more in the future, and agreed Danny did well in presenting the case. If I have two very minor clarifications, is this the appropriate time to proceed with that? So a, as far as the FAA compliance for the top light specifically, FAA only, only requires that light to be on the eighty-meter tower. The other two are under two-hundred feet, so any marking associated is considered voluntary, which we will include in the form of painted spherical markers, but the top light will only be proposed on the tallest of three towers on the Hurtnecki parcel. And the other was just as far as exclusionary fencing, in addition to those anchor points supporting each mast, the mast itself will also have the same exclusionary fencing, if it, if it makes a difference. So there will be no potential contact with the structures once they're installed. Other than that, thanks a lot. Looking forward to any questions if they come. Thanks. And this is my partner here, Ashley, if she wants to introduce herself. She's our permitting support.
Good evening. Thank you, everybody. My name is Ashley Bowden, and I believe between Danny and Matt and Tyler's clarifications, it's, it's pretty well covered. I believe you have the information in, in front of you, applications that I've helped support and pull together. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comments, and if you have signed up, please come forward and speak. Seeing no motion, no interest, come on up. Please state your name and address, and please make your comments.
My name is Chris Hurtnecki, and I live at two-zero-nine-five-zero, County Road ninety-three, out of Rema, address. I am the current tenant for two of the three properties for these met towers. I have been in contact with the landowners of those two properties. Neither have any concerns or issues before I came to the meeting. I'm also the owner of the closest residence to the north of the one that's a half mile away. We have no issue with this. And furthermore, Bijou Hills has responsibly and attentively dealt with the current met tower that's within two miles of our residence for the last number of years. We have no concerns or issues with their actions on that either. So we have, we have no issues with these three applications. Any questions?
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? That being said, I will close public testimony. I'm pretty sure the applicant doesn't want to rebut that statement, so...
Nope, we're good.
Perfect. So at this point, we'll, we'll turn this over to a board-only discussion, and... Van, let's start with you this time.
Yeah, I, I don't have any, any questions. I thought that the proposals were very well put together and explained most, any questions I might have, so...
Thank you. Nicole?
Hey there. I do have some questions. So first, I, I wanted to ask staff, I guess I'll start with staff. I know that our packet in your presentation said that these were deemed compatible in 2018. I just wanted to clarify that the action that you're pointing toward is when the three towers were approved before by the prior board. Is that right?
Yeah, I was just referencing that these towers have existed in our county and, yeah, were deemed compatible in the past.
And it was the three, was that, that was when all three towers were approved, 2018?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. And that actually brings a question to mind while we have our, our team's person on. I don't know if he is available to answer any questions, but you brought up the fact that those three towers, because one of my questions was, who did those towers belong to? And it sounds like they belonged to your company. And I know that you mentioned that the technology is old. Well, of course, that was seven years ago. Are they still being used? And when that, when they were approved, was it for about the length of time that you're suggesting you will need this S U R to last for the current set of towers? Another two to seven years?
Yeah, hi, Nicole, those are all really good questions. To answer your first question, actually, those towers were, we, we acquired those towers from another company. So that, that kind of predates my, my time and my colleague's time with the company, but I do know that we did acquire them. I'm not sure how good they were keeping the, the data and condition back then, but I suspect that could be some of the reasons why we had some data losses. So there, there's that part. The towers are still being used. We just tried to retrofit and, and update them. So the more towers that we have, the better. Typically, we would have around six, so this is pretty standard for us to get our correct data collection. And so we're going to keep trying to gather and analyze the data from those older towers, especially since we just did some upgrades to them. And then the final, your final question regarding the length, I, I, we don't have a for sure amount of years that we can say, but what we do know is that, you know, these existing towers were out there for an extended period of time. We suspect that the new towers that we put out won't be out there for more than seven years.
Yeah, the application said two to five years, so seven is actually kind of the first time hearing of it now that you've mentioned that during your, your discussion. So was just curious, I mean, since we're talking about the older towers already being seven years old, is seven actually not, not an accurate reflection, given the fact that you're not decommissioning them or taking them down now, seven years later? Are we actually talking about more of a ten, fifteen-year type of S U R?
Yeah, that's a, that's a fair point, and to be honest with you, the ideal timeline that we would have these new met towers deployed out there would be for about five years, which is why our application says two to five years. I said seven because that's typically what we've done in the past, but yeah, specifically for these new ones, ideally, you're looking at around five years. For the new, for, excuse me, for the existing ones, because again, there was a drop in data, we do have to have those existing ones out there for longer than we normally would, but those would be decommissioned at around the same time that the newly deployed ones would be decommissioned, so let's call that another five years.
I see. Okay, thank you for clarifying. So it sounds like in Albert County, there are, proposed now to be six of these towers, these met towers. Do, does your company operate these type of met towers or any other wind farm projects in the state?
Yes, we have deployed met towers all over the country. Within the state, I know for certain we have deployed met towers on the eastern side of the state. The specific counties and locations, I'm unsure of, just because I, I don't work in that region per se, but yeah, we do have pretty extensive experience with, with these met towers. And in fact, the, the team who does the installing for the met towers is an in-house team, and so they're going to be handling the installation and yearly maintenance of the towers.
Okay. All right, that's helpful. Thank you. I wanted to ask, you talked about six being an ideal number. Do you foresee, I mean, here we are, seven years later, and you're adding another three, do we foresee that there will be more asks for more of these met towers in, in the coming five years? As we're talking about decommissioning, are we going to be setting up new towers?
No. There's not a need to put out anymore. In fact, we were originally thinking about having the seven total, but we took one away because we thought it was excessive, so we have sufficient towers with the three new ones that we're looking to deploy.
Okay. And then, I mean, you mentioned it in your, in your application, but just to clarify, the purpose of collecting all of this data is to determine whether or not a wind farm is going to be successful in the areas that you're testing. Is that right?
Yeah, so the purpose of the met towers is to collect a, a ton of environmental data, including atmospheric pressure, wind speeds, et cetera, and it's, we utilize that data analysis to see if it's a suitable location for a, a wind project. The analysis, whether good or bad, does not predict the outcome of any potential wind project. It's just a, you know, beginning-stage analysis of, of the environmental data in the area.
I see. So, and, and your company, do you also manage the, you know, wind turbines farms that go up in, in the places where you're testing?
We do, yes.
Okay, so this is like the preliminary stage of something that your company would potentially continue to manage if you deemed that you wanted to put in a, a application for a wind farm? This project would continue on with you?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
I do have a question for, for staff. I was just curious with regard to met towers in our county, is the only way that they can exist through an S U R on ag zone land?
I believe so. The only land use categorizations that I found would be, yeah, S U R-related. Unless you considered it a minor utility location, then it could be permitted as a use by right, but that would be, you know, kind of iffy. I don't know if you could really consider it a minor utility, but if you did, then it would be a use by right.
Okay. All right, thank you. For the applicant, what is the purpose between the different heights of these towers? Why is one over two-hundred feet and the other two are less than two-hundred feet, besides the fact that the FAA has different rules regarding what goes on them?
Yeah, it's, to be honest with you, it's, it's pushing the extent of my knowledge just a little bit from, but from what I understand, we typically deploy sixty-meter towers, which is what's already out there in the area. That gives us a, a general understanding of, of the environmental data. However, apparently, when you step up from sixty to eighty meters, there is quite a bit of difference, and you gain more certainty over all of the environmental, environmental data that you're collecting. So it's just an, there's just a more certainty over the data that the towers are collecting. But my colleague Tyler, if you have any other comments, feel free to, to let them know as
Hey, I, I don't have much further to add. I just, I think the added height adds greater level of detail to the data being collected.
Okay.
And, I mean, speaking very preemptively here, but, you know, there are obviously multiple turbine models out there in the market today, and just the added, the added strata that are, the added strata that are being analyzed with these towers of different heights would only add to that resource assessment, if you will, but also outside of my wheelhouse, so we'd have to ask outside of this group.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking because I noticed that two of them are the lower height and one is the higher height, so it sounds like what I hear you saying is that if it's taller, it actually gives you better, more reliable data? Is that, is that what you were saying?
I wouldn't necessarily say that it adds better data, it just adds more, more data slightly different in the two-sixties.
So what is the reasoning behind having, not putting all of them at over two-hundred feet? All three? Do, do you know?
I, I, I don't have an answer. Matt, do you?
I, I, yeah, I, I believe, and we can certainly, you know, follow up if needed, but I, I believe just the, the sheer fact that we typically only need one-eighty met tower to, to gain that differential and data analysis. The eighty met towers themselves are, are higher and, and, and cost more, and so typically we deploy sixty-meter towers as much as possible and only use one-eighty meter, just because it, it costs more money.
Okay. And that actually brings up a, a point that I wanted to ask as a clarification, maybe to staff first, but also to applicant. I noticed that on the tallest tower in the staff report, it says, and also in your application, it says that there will be that orange-white painting or whatever on the tower top, or the tower, but it doesn't say that for the lower towers. And so I wanted to clarify, will there be that differentiation for safety purposes, right, for, for aviation? Or, or was that, I think staff said it was going to be on all of them, but the application packet said it was only going to be on the tallest one. So can you clarify?
Yeah, so for sure, the eighty-meter tower will have the top light as well as the paint. We're, we're speaking FAA here. The sixty-meter towers, sorry, this is very awkward. The sixty-meter towers, it's officially to be determined since it's voluntary, but at minimum, we will have the spherical markers on those sixty-meter towers. The paint is to be determined officially, but it is not planned at this moment in time.
I did see that there was a proposed rule with the FAA that, that was proposed in November, saying that towers between fifty feet and two-hundred feet would also have that same, like, color coding on the tower. And to my understanding, they collected comments through January, but it hasn't actually, the final rule hasn't come out. But that would be something that you would comply with, whatever FAA's updated requirements are for towers that are of a shorter height, correct?
If, if it is current and valid, yes.
Okay. And I noticed that you only have the light on the tallest tower.
Yep.
If that is something, and I wasn't quite clear whether or not the proposed rule would also indicate the light being an issue in addition to the painting, but whether we're talking about lights or the paint code, paint colors, those would be things that you would be compliant with, whatever the FAA rulemaking is.
Yes, correct.
Okay, great. Wanted to ask, because I did look at the response from the Colorado Parks and Wildlife, and they talked about those, those bird collisions, and I guess, I just had a clarification, because when I was looking at the response from applicant about wanting to have something that was, you know, a little bit more avian-friendly, that I think the response was, that response was that this is more grassland rather than wetland, but on the application that we got from staff, they actually characterized as small areas as seasonably, seasonally wet, wetland and freshwater pond. So I just wanted to make sure that we're taking into account here that we do have birds that are, that there are seasonal wet birds and freshwater ponds, depending on how soon this, this tower is going up, who might actually be having interactions with birds who are migratory and who are coming to a wetland area, not just a grassland area. Is that, is that just oversight, or is there a change in the applicant that there are seasonally wetlands here and ponds?
Right, so it is, it is not an oversight. We acknowledge the existence of migratory birds. And as far as applicability, depending on when we plan to install the towers, assuming that the motion is approved, our staff, that this internal installation team will be informed and trained to look out for birds and notify me, and if I, if I neglected to mention this, I'm the environmental permitting manager for this project, as well as our consult, consultant... um, as well as our, uh, consult consultant contractors, uh, for the project. So should birds be encountered, they will be speaking to me directly. I'm a wildlife biologist, that's my background. Um, and as needed, we will be sending contractors out to review, um, observations of said birds. As far as the question about, uh, the existence of wetlands and potential streams, um, certainly acknowledging that they are nearby. It's in my notebook here, those distances. But these towers were were sighted in uplands away from potential impacts to these noted areas. And so we are not viewing their installation as having a form of impact on on them. Um, now that's specific to foraging or potential water birds that might be visiting. But one other thing to keep in mind is, you know, a lot of these are seasonal, um, seasonal aquatic features. So it's not likely that they would be highly suitable to migratory birds or even grassland birds, um, unless they were seasonally flooded. So that's all to say, uh, we will be keeping our eyes out and we've got a team working on it. And it is definitely a priority of ours to manage wildlife interactions appropriately.
I don't have dates for that.
Yep.
Probably the most destructive time, given the fact that, you know, it's seasonally.
Exactly.
So I want to think how it is, you know, since it was back at the time of the year. And when a, when a seasonal wetland started.
Right. Yep.
Um, I just, I wonder something. I was wondering if there is any kind of plan for decommissioning of this tower? Because I didn't see that in, I didn't see that as a condition. I didn't see it as a discussion. Um, whether or not in discussion with the applicant staff or applicant. Did you have that discussion with staff?
For these towers, we did not have any decommissioning discussion.
So, I mean, one thing I guess is wanting to make sure, have some kind of assurance from the county that there's a removal timeline. So for example, when the process, um, of data collection is over or if the project gets canceled or if your lease expires. Um, one thing I didn't see was how long your lease is for. I know you just mentioned that you're hoping to potentially have the land for the project for seven years. So is your lease the lease that lasts for seven years? Is it something that, is that something that you could provide to us?
Matt, I can assure you, I think I can answer that question. I'm thinking through my head on the the different, uh, leases that we have with our landowners. And I I do believe that they run through, it's, it's either, I believe that, I believe they run through 2030 is when the leases go through. If we had to ask for an extension, uh, we we could do that. But that's typically when the leases run through. And then, um, I'm sorry, your your mic cut out earlier. I did just want to mention also on the subject of birds that we have, uh, asked our team to include bird diverters on the guy wires as well.
Great, glad to hear that. Um, so I I guess, um, for just discussion with, um, you know, my colleagues up here is I I wonder if, so for example, if if data collection ended, the lease expired, um, the project was canceled for some reason. I'd love to see a condition in here that gives assurance that the decommissioning will happen, let's say, within 90 days of that, of that being done. That way, um, we know that there's an assurance for the county that the, um, the applicant will be quick to get their stuff back in order and be able to restore the land back to, um, its former agricultural use. Um, the other thing, the last thing I'll I'll mention is that, um, I wonder if we would be interested in considering, um, some type of a time limit to the S U R. I know that our, um, our, our zoning regulations say that the project must be started within a year in order, um, to not have to request an extended deadline from the county. Um, so given the fact that, let's say, within the year this project gets going, um, are we looking at, do we want this to potentially be like the other project up to 14 years? Or would we want to consider, you know, some type of a shorter S U R that potentially could be extended if if the project warranted extension and we talked to the applicant about it? But I just, um, that's something that I think maybe the other commissioners should consider is are we interested in having some type of a timeline or a deadline for this S U R? That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Dan?
Thanks.
I'd like a little clarification on one of Nicole's questions. So are you currently operating wind turbines, uh, in Eastern Colorado?
No, we are not currently operating wind turbines in Eastern Colorado.
But you are.
We, we, we have, we've had experience in the past with, um, met, uh, met towers like the, like these in Eastern Colorado.
I mean, are you primarily a data provider or a, uh, you know, a a wind farm, uh, energy producer?
Uh, we are an energy company that covers, um, many different types of technologies.
Uh, one other question regarding the fencing around, uh, the towers. You know, there, there was a reference that the fencing, you know, would be keeping cattle, uh, you know, out of harm's way, so to speak. Is the fencing in in conformance with the Department of Wildlife relative to like deer and antelope?
So, thank you, great question. Uh, the strict purpose of this is to keep creatures out. It is, it is effectively cattle, cattle panel fencing, maybe four feet tall. That will be secured to T-posts, um, in a perimeter around each. So I I I can't speak to whether or not it is necessarily compliant with, uh, Colorado Parks and Wildlife or US Fish and Wildlife, but it is the standard fencing you will see across agricultural applications. And it will be very tight around each anchor point and the mass. So it's, in my opinion, very unlikely that there would be, uh, an entrapment risk, if you will, for a large game, for example. Say it again.
Oh, I can answer that.
Oh, yeah, please, Ashley.
Hi, Ashley Boden again. So, uh, in my experience, I, I'm sorry that I don't have the direct citation from you all, but from the Colorado Parks and Wildlife, uh, Designing Wildlife Friendly Fences Guidance, uh, to paraphrase, um, what they want to avoid is fencing over six feet, uh, and fencing with barbed wire on top. Those are some of the main concerns for CPW, which are not elements of this fencing. It is a shorter stature, um, if that helps.
Thank you.
And one more addition to that, if I may, uh, we've got a lot of pronghorn out here. Obviously, pronghorn, if you, if you, if you weren't aware, are very fast. They're not great jumpers. And when encountering a fence, they will tend to go under the fence where possible as opposed to over it, which would be not an issue in this particular case. So maybe six to eight inch openings in this panel fencing. So pronghorn, we're all concerned about that, um, here. But it would not be a applicable issue in this case for pronghorn.
Any other questions, Dan? Thank you. Robert?
Good evening. Um, yes, a couple of questions. So just to clarify, you do not currently, uh, operate, uh, any wind or solar, uh, generation projects uh, here in Colorado?
That is correct.
All right. Um, so in light of, you know, the end goal is to be able to, you know, gather data that would be, you know, um, supportive of, you know, a, a wind, uh, wind project. And to possibly answer your question about why they need a tower that's a little bit higher than the others is depending upon the overall heights above average terrain, because the typical center line of a wind turbine can be anywhere from 80 meters to 130 meters. And so they want to get towards that center line associated with a potential wind turbine to be able to get accurate data as to what it can generate. So that kind of answers your question. So in in relationship to that, what are other typical criteria for, for a successful project? And I'm, I'm setting you up for an answer of, is there any infrastructure nearby? Is there any transmission lines nearby any of these particular, uh, met towers? That would be associated with the wind turbine project?
Uh, I'm not sure that that we have the accurate information to answer the question at this point because everything is so early stage and unknown. The most important criteria really is, you know, guesstimating where there could be potential, uh, high wind speeds and, you know, putting out met towers in a spaced out area accordingly so that we could begin the first step of research, collection and analysis. Um, that's probably the most information that I have at this point.
Isn't it also, um, associated with a project like this to have some near in electrical infrastructure transmission line to be able to tie that wind farm into?
Uh, as as it pertains to wind projects themselves, um, you could tie into a transmission line as far away as, you know, 50 miles, really. Um, it just depends on on the size of the project and the location and all that. So, um, you know, I, I, unfortunately, I, I'm not prepared to answer that question because it's so early stage. And, you know, what we're trying to do here is really permit the deployment of the met towers.
I I just, you know, personally, I find it interesting, even though it's, you know, a future, a future consideration, that one of your met towers is in the current, uh, Colorado, uh, Excel Power Pathway project. And so, you know, to me, you know, that it's, it's like you're, you're, you're hedging your bet and putting a tower there in hopes that, you know, that particular project goes through, which would give you, you know, a opportune, uh, uh, ability to be able to tie in to that particular project.
Yeah, I honestly, I can't really add more to that at this point. But the only thing that I could say is that, um, again, we did have the met towers deployed back in 2018. And I don't remember when, uh, Excel started on the Colorado Power Pathway idea, but I do believe that predates any conception or at least permitting for the power pathway. So that is all to say that, you know, our met towers, I believe, predates the intention of any transmission line in the area.
Danny, where, where are the existing met towers that they, uh, currently, uh, operate? Do you know? Or do you guys know?
I don't have it offhand here. I can pull it up if if you'd like.
Yeah, I would, I would like.
Yeah, so we have an, we have an existing met tower off of, um, kind of on the corner of County Road 89 and County Road, uh, 93. Um, that would be further west of Rem. Yep, we have an existing, and that's on Mr. Robert Hurtneke's property. We have an existing met tower, um, just north of County Road 94 and, uh, looks like 125, and that's on Mr. Greg Mitchell's property. And then the final one, I'm sorry, and that one, I guess, would be further east. Uh, and then further east of that, pretty far east, actually, would be off of, uh, County Road 102. And that is with, um, well, it's with Cedar Ridge Properties.
Cedar Ridge Project.
And that's, uh, north of Matheson. And I, so I, I hope that helps to answer your question.
So the locations near the intersection of CR 93 and CR 82, near the intersection of CR 129 and CR 94, and then, uh, in Cedar Ridge along CR 102. And I, that one's further out.
Yeah, you gonna show that on the map?
This, yeah, I'm trying. This, this puck is giving me issues right now.
No, I can eyeball those.
Yeah, I was, I, I was actually hoping to see that line to see kind of what what the path is going to be for the solar pro or the, uh, the wind project coming behind this at some levels.
Yeah.
You know, notional view at this point, but. Are we out of puck?
We're out of puck right now, yeah.
Okay. Any more questions?
Um, not at this moment, but I may, I may again.
Diana?
Um, just, just a few questions, but they're all for staff. Danny?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, um, so back to the S U R. Um, we don't have anything in front of us asking for a specific timeframe on that, correct?
There's no specific timeframe limit.
Okay, um, and looking at the, um, S U R standards in the zoning regulations, uh, we, we do, from at least what I see, we do have a process for S U Rs, um, that they are subject to annual review, which would be something, as I can tell from CDS, and stop me if I'm wrong, um, that they do run with the land. So I'm not quite sure when you, um, spoke about they would, it would be, I don't think we used the word decommission, but it will keep going as, as far as I understand the S U R zoning regulations. There's no end date on that, but CDS would be most likely reviewing this on an annual basis. And that, um, let's see, it talks about duration of validity in here. The commencement of the S U R must occur within that first year. And let's see, hang on, because I'm, we were talking about this and I, I think we've got it all documented, um, that if the permit has been changed in some way or discontinued, that CDS would request a public hearing with the Planning Commission and the B O C C um, to, uh, verify the validity of the permit. So I, just some of the questions that we, we had, I, I think those are covered, at least looking at the existing zoning regulations that we have. Just, um, a couple of other things, uh, the sign, pictures and affidavits. I didn't see those in the packets. Do we have those?
Yeah, so the applicant provided all those to us. That was another one of the issue with the seven days. So they provided all the sign affidavits and pictures, and I I have all those.
Okay, and those will be in the packet for the B O C C to see.
That's correct.
Okay, um, let's see. Oh, the last thing was on, uh, and I'm probably going to butcher the name, the Whirl. The first one, the W, thank you. Um, I did not see a deed in there. I saw a lot of deeds and there were some really great historical deeds in there, but I did not see a current deed with the current owner's name on it. But I did see it in the other two packets. There were like a bazillion pages of deeds and it seemed to be everyone but the current one.
Property deed, here's property deed here. That is what I'm going off of, this old deed, and this is a Whirl one.
We need a current. We need a current deed, well, what is the date on that? Is it our county? And does it have the current owner's name? Because I...
It says County of Albert right here. This is previous name here. Let's see.
You've got younger eyes than I do, Danny, so hopefully you can see that a lot better than I can. And I'm just, out of my own curiosity, wondering, why did you throw the kitchen sink of deeds
If there is a discrepancy in the documentation, we will absolutely provide it. I'm confident that it's present.
Somewhere in there.
It is. I can't speak to the issue here, but the deed is on file. Was submitted.
Title commitment.
I did, and I did see that. Can we make it a condition of approval that there's a current deed with the applicant's or with the landowner's name on it to be included for the B O C C packet?
Any other questions? We can make that a...
Oh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I have no questions. I think they've done a good job of following the county rules.
Okay, so I heard three potential conditions. I don't know whether we've categorized all of those.
So the conditions were some condition on decommissioning the towers. Possibility for a timeline and a limit of time, and then the third was a current deed for the Worrel.
And I'd add, with regard to the time limit, that some type of language saying that extension requests could be submitted if needed.
So one feature of our S U Rs is they can be reviewed on an annual basis. So if the Planning Commission thought these have overstayed their welcome, we need to take a look at, you know, taking these down, or there's getting complaints, things like that, CDS would review them, and it would be brought to the county commissioners, and it would be decided on. So that option is always there.
Yes, I actually brought that up at the last meeting we had regarding an S U R, and I think it was Jennifer who said that typically, unless there's a problem, those are automatically renewed. So my suggestion, though, is something different. It's about having a limitation so that the applicant knows this is a period of time that we have to get the project done, and then to allow for an extension of that time. Obviously, I think that that annual review would still stand. That's my opinion, because that's still part of our zoning regulations.
Right, so we'll just make it a stipulation of the motion. So, and the other piece of the puzzle is, is the applicant willing to stand up for the potential for the FAA markings associated with, markings and potential lighting for the 60-meter towers?
Your question is, if the regulation changes and we are obliged to...
I know. Let's go ahead and just plan that the regulation is going to happen. Will you paint the towers and light the tower or the two towers that are lower?
If it is currently mandated, then yes.
Okay. I'd like to make that a stipulation as well.
That was a condition that was already in there.
Is it? Okay. It didn't sound like it, because it was, sounded like it was optional for the 60, and the applicant actually restated that it was optional for the 60.
Just that all FAA rules are followed throughout the lifespan of the tower was the condition, so...
I just want to get ahead of it.
Okay.
So...
I mean, that's a good point. Like, if the criteria changes, but the FAA doesn't require a post or a tower that's been built, for example, to change, but we would prefer, the county would prefer for it to be updated for safety, that is something that the county could potentially create as a condition that would be slightly different than what is already in there, which is that they have to be compliant with FAA.
And I just have to ask, and maybe a little more discussion, why are we wanting to limit the timeframe on the S U R? Is that even within our jurisdiction based on what has been presented to us?
It is within our jurisdiction because we have the right to ask for stipulations as part of our recommendation.
And I, that's fine, but I'd like to know why I would be voting on that.
Okay, so that becomes part of a working group session that we can handle after this. I think it's right and proper that we allow this, but we definitely should take that off of this conversation. This is about the S U Rs, and so let's focus on the S U Rs.
I understand that, but if it's going to become a condition on the S U R that I need to vote on...
It's a recommendation that goes to the board, and it is a recommendation that Board of County Commissioners will either affirm or deny.
I understand that, but if I, as a planning...
You don't have to vote for it.
I would really appreciate the tone coming down a little bit.
No worries. Can we have an additional question for the applicant?
Sure. With regards to the siding of the met towers, I'm assuming with, and again, another, to me, it'd be another condition associated with a successful project is not only, you know, within a reasonable distance for any kind of transmission line, but also at the same time that you, you know, you have surveyed the neighbors associated with the potential for a wind turbine project. Is that also the case? You've already surveyed the area, landowners and so on, to see if they're interested in having a wind turbine farm out in their, you know, neighborhood?
Can you speak to that one, Matt?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Yeah, we have done that survey that you're, you know, speaking of and spoken to landowners, et cetera, but again, this is all very preliminary. So, you know, unfortunately, the first step in understanding, you know, the area is really the resource itself, and so that's the met towers and what we're really focused on here.
Okay, thank you.
So what is the typical or the probable timeframe from, you know, erecting the towers, collecting the data, and making a decision to proceed with a wind project in this area? Or in an area that's, you know, generally within the relative proximity of the towers?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. It's also a very tough question because they range completely. I mean, you know, these are very difficult projects to do. These are expensive projects. Things don't work out for a variety of different reasons, and so, you know, projects could run from anywhere from, you know, maybe five years to 15 years on their development timelines. The average, from what I've seen, is typically seven years, but again, that really depends on a lot of things, you know, and varies state by state, county by county, et cetera.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I think, if I may, just add to the stipulation, you know, I don't want to comment on whether or not that's appropriate to do here, but what I would ask is, you know, just a little bit of fairness on if there was a stipulation on timeline for decommissioning, what that timeline would look like. I think we've done a lot of work and a lot of good work here to get us to this point to have a good and meaningful conversation, and so if there is any stipulation on timeline for decommissioning, I hope that it would be something, you know, that's fair.
Matt, just to follow on with a question to that, what does a typical decommissioning timeline look like for these kind of met towers?
Yeah, the decommissioning is typically the same as it is for installs. So for meter towers, that's really a day's worth of work, and for the 80-meter, it's a little bit more so, about two days. Decommissioning is, would be the same amount of time.
So if we were to recommend a stipulation of 90 days, which we think was what was bandied about, post the end of lease, that that would be something that was acceptable and fair in your eyes?
I mean, I'd always prefer just a little bit more time because a lot of things happen, especially out there, you know, with the weather.
94 days, then.
The time of year, 94 days. I mean, I feel like 120 days is probably what I'm thinking about as fair. We've never really had a stipulation on decommissioning a met tower for all the met towers that we put out, so this is something new to me, but, you know, I do think it depends on the time of year and our staff availability. We want to make sure we do it right, and so I think, you know, maybe something a little bit more generous would be helpful.
Yeah, cool. We hear you. At that, at this point, any other questions, any last comments, concerns? Then I'll entertain a motion with the stipulations that we've talked about.
Can we please read the stipulations for the record? What does CDS have?
So there's nothing concrete for the timeline. There is the condition on decommissioning, 120 days after a lease ends, and then there's provide a current deed for the Worrel property. So those are the main two I've gotten. The timeline was never really fleshed out, if it was seven or five or three or...
Yeah, I think we discussed five, and I don't think we landed on anything to your point, but...
We didn't, and I wonder if we necessarily need to upon just recommending that there be a timeline with a deadline to the commissioners, that that's something that they also could decide, but we could still recommend since it doesn't exist. I wanted to add that with regard to the decommissioning, besides the lease ending, I think I also mentioned that the conclusion of the data collection or potentially a project cancellation, if either three of those things were to happen, that we would have a decommissioning clock start to tick.
Fair enough. On the readback, that sounds reasonable. Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
And I gave you recommended motions there. If you'd like to read for each tower to make your recommendation or not, whatever you'd like to do.
I think at this point, we're counting them as a single unit, so we can go ahead and group them together by 0498, 0598, and 079B, if that makes sense.
Sure. Yes, that'll work.
We noticed that each one are different, and, you know, we haven't gone through a vote yet, so with that, again, entertain a motion with the three extra stipulations
Seems to be my lot in life. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the following S U Rs, S U R 2024-0109. Recommend approval, thank you, Van. We recommend approval for S U R 2024-0109. Also, S U R 2024-0114, and S U R 2024-2490, with the atypical recommended approval with conditions, including the following. That upon the completion of the project or the... End of lease for the project, that decommissioning of these sites would be completed within 120 days. That the packet provided to the Board of County Commissioners has an updated deed for the Worrel property, and a suggested timeline to be limited to, for the S U Rs, to five
Thank you, Van. Roll call vote, please.
Diana Edstrom?
No, and I'll be happy to give an explanation if you want to wait till after everybody votes.
No, no, go ahead.
I would be very happy to vote for this application. I'm not happy to vote for it with a timeframe on a business as to how they're doing their, as to how they're doing their business. I don't, I don't see any reason for that, and it doesn't make sense to me. So, other than that, I would vote yes on this.
Dan McCullen? Nicole Hunt? John Gresham? Van Sands?
Go ahead and vote.
Yeah, aye.
Robert Potek?
Aye.
Kevin Kirkwood?
I know this is going to tie into the future conversations we have around power in the county. I'll vote aye on this with the idea that this is going to become more interesting in a short amount of time.
Chairman, you have six ayes and one nay.
Thank you. I believe we have one other item on the agenda, and I would like to do a 13-minute, yeah, thank you, we'll close the hearing on the S U Rs, but I would like to do a 13-minute
So this involves three properties just at the south end of Kiowa here. The parcel numbers are listed above. These are referred to as the Digby Properties. They're all owned by Digby LLC. The site size is approximately 113.5 acres, and the requested zoning is Agriculture A. Currently, they have no zoning, their zoning is undefined. The applicant is Albert County, and again, this is a rezone from undefined. It was a Kiowa zoning, P D, Plan Development. It was a Kiowa zoning P D plan development, which does not exist within Albert County to agriculture. Brief background for these properties, they were annexed into the town of Kiowa back in two thousand and two. There was a planned development in Kiowa that did not occur and the properties were removed by decree in two thousand and twenty-four. The map here shows the little circle over Kiowa and that's where they're at. Here's a zoning map of the properties. Immediately to the north of the subject properties are residences within the town of Kiowa along Shasta Court. To the east of the properties is County Road forty-five and one thousand eight hundred seventy-seven acre property owned by Harmony Land and Cattle. To the south of the properties is a seventy acre property with a residence and several outbuildings that is zoned agriculture. And to the west of the properties are two, one, a five hundred and two acre property owned by Harmony Land and Cattle again. And a four, four point two acre property that will remain within the incorporated town. It's that little gray kind of odd shape there, trapezoid-ish. Here's an aerial of, of the requested rezoned properties and they're not outlined here, but I'll zoom in further. As you can see, there is the town of Kiowa. If you really squinted, you can make out our building here. There's no flood plain within this property or no wetlands. The access would be from County Road forty-five and Ute Avenue also has an access point. Here's the property shaded, so this is the one hundred and thirteen point five acre area that's requesting to be rezoned. It's currently in three separate parcels, but it would all be rezoned to agriculture. So this process began in February with a request from the Board of County Commissioners for this county initiated rezon. The, the properties were removed by decree, actually back in August of two thousand and twenty-four. It did go through a referral. There's an error there. It's just from March twentieth to April tenth. The planning commission date here today, May twentieth, and it is scheduled for a hearing with the Board of County Commissioners, June eleventh. All notice requirements were met per Albert County zoning regulations, which required posting for three consecutive weeks in the ranchland news. There's no mailing or signposting required for this, just the three consecutive weeks of noticing in ranchland news for any county initiated rezon. There's been no public comment for this. These were the agencies who were contacted during the referral period and there were no comments or concerns about this project. Now, the process for all county initiated rezones can be summarized as follows. The Board of County Commissioners, Planning Commission, or the Board of Adjustment may at any time direct the Community Development Services Department to initiate rezoning for any parcel or parcels of land within unincorporated area of Albert County. The Board of County Commissioners initiated this rezoning process on February nineteenth and I was assigned as a staff planner for the application. The application was sent for a referral and public noticing as a standard practice. Albert County Planning finds that this application generally conforms to the standard criteria for rezonings. The proposed rezoning is generally consistent with the goals in our comprehensive plan as well. Albert County strongly supports private property rights that encourage agricultural land uses and this rezoning should be compatible with the higher density residential adjacent to the property and within the town of Kiowa and compatible with the large lot agricultural ranching and ranching properties that surround the subject property to the southeast and west. So it is generally consistent with the goals of our comprehensive plan and these are findings. They're not, this application is not necessarily held to the same review criteria as other rezoning. It's somewhat nebulous in our regulations how it should be judged, but these are our standard criteria that it generally conforms to as well. The proposed rezoning is generally compatible with surrounding land uses and it will not adversely affect any provision of public services or impact negatively the surrounding properties. The rezoning will not adversely impact the environment. The rezoning to agriculture will not create unreasonable traffic congestion. No additional lots are being proposed. And then finally F, it will not be detrimental to the present or future inhabitants of Albert County. So our recommendation for this property is for approval of the rezon for the Digby properties in this county initiated rezon. Pretty brief presentation here and I'll show the property survey here with the three separate parcels that are being requested for agriculture.
Thanks, Danny. I'm going to go ahead and start the questioning because I don't think that, I don't know if you want to speak on this one. I think this becomes immediately into a board only discussion. I, I'm looking at this going, okay, so why the orphan little piece of property that, that's adjacent? And is there a right of way for that property to connect to the town?
Yes, there's an existing easement and this rezoning will not impact that existing easement. That's owned by a separate property owner.
I wish we could absorb that piece of the puzzle as well. So starting off on the right side, John, you want to start? Any questions?
No, seems pretty simple. I have no questions.
Hannah?
Same here. I don't have any questions. Very straightforward.
Can you go back to the, the Google Map version? Too far, too far. Keep going. Forward, forward. There, stop. No, go back. Too far. Right there. So is that, is that a residence on that weird piece of? It is a residence, so that's why the easement?
Yes, and, and the easement is shown on the surveys and this basically can be rezoned with legal description only, as is allowed in county initiated rezoning, so it does not need a rezon exhibit.
All right, perfect. I just wanted to clarify that this is not going to have any harmful impact to that particular property owner or anything else from the easement standpoint or anything else.
No, nothing changes there.
All right, very good. No more questions.
Danny? Nicole?
The only question I had really was just more of a technical question. In this case, obviously, this has its own landowner, but what is the reason why a county would initiate a rezon rather than the landowner itself, himself or herself?
So this is because the property was de-annexed from the town of Kiowa and the properties have to have zoning and so they had Kiowa zoning, Kiowa de-annexed them, so we have to give them Albert County zoning. So future development, they would come in and potentially, you know, request to rezon, but as a part of it becoming under Albert County jurisdiction, we have to zone the property.
So any city within our county, if they de-annex their property, then the county has to initiate a type of rezon just to get it back into our jurisdiction?
We have to zone the property, that's correct. It happens the other way as well, right? If property was annexed from the county into an incorporated community, they have to zone the property as well.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Van? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approving case R Z two zero two five nine oh one.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'll entertain another motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn. Second, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Thank you.